Stop talking about this and open the meeting. Please stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance if you care to. Mr. Franklin, would you lead us in prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Lord, as we gather here in community, we give thanks. We ask for strength and guidance, guidance in doing what is right, and the strength to provide our input with confidence. We seek encouragement to help us in protecting, preserving, and encouraging the citizens of Republic. Let us all find comfort in giving our personal contributions, all adding value to the city we call home. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. We have a short agenda, but a packed room, so we'll see how this goes. We're going to start with citizen participation. I know that there are multiple people here that want to talk on a specific issue on the agenda later on. We're going to wait till that time to let you guys speak. If there are people here wanting to speak about something not on the agenda, you will be allowed to approach the podium, state your name and address, and speak for three minutes if it's something that's not scheduled for tonight. Is there anyone here that wants to do that? Excellent. We'll close citizen participation, move on to the consent agenda. I need a...I welcome the council to ask any questions about items number one or two on the agenda. Do we have any questions? Discussion? Then I would entertain a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. The Board of Adjustments meeting on July 6th has been canceled. There will be one on August 3rd, 2023. We have a planning and zoning meeting July 10th, 2023, and a city council meeting. Our next one will be July 18th, 2023. I think July 4th knocks us out into later on in July. So we're going to move on to old business and tabled items. This is item number three on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-17 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving execution of an amendment to the developer agreement with Republic 63 LLC for the continued development of the Hankins Farm Plan Development District.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-17, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance does pass by a vote of six to zero. Moving on to item number four on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-18 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Republic R3 School District to share the cost of professional emergency operations services provided by AARC Consultants LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-18.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of six to zero. Moving on to new business, this is item number five on our agenda. Now, just so everybody knows, I do know that we have several people here that want to speak tonight. You will be given an opportunity to speak. Some people ask, "How does this process work?" And I'd like to address that right up front. What we do is we hear a first reading tonight. So we will be told about what's going on. The council will be able to ask questions. You will be able to speak for or against this ordinance, and then it comes back to the council. So it's under consideration, and we will vote on it at the next meeting, possibly. I mean, things do get continued for reasons, sometimes outside of our control. But it's likely it would be voted on for a final passage, like what you just saw a few minutes ago. You are all welcome to speak. I know that some people don't like public speaking. I get it. But if you want to get up there and say the same thing the last person said, that is absolutely fine, but you're not required to. You can also say, "I join with the last person," or something along those effects. But you will be given three minutes if you want it, so you can say everything good one way or the other. So hearing all of that, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-19 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 17.19 acres of real property located at 3020 North York Avenue from agricultural AG to heavy industrial M2.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Karen Haynes, built administrator. The applicant, James Wade, has applied for a change in zoning designation for property located 3020 North York Avenue from agricultural AG to heavy industrial M2. The property consists of 17.19 acres and is currently occupied by two single-family residential properties. The city's comprehensive plan encourages the expansion of both commercial and industrial development through proactive rezoning of land at appropriate locations. Appropriate locations are described with relationship to the regard of land at locations capable of supporting various intensities and densities of uses. The rezoning of this parcel is consistent with the city's adopted plans, including the comprehensive plan and the transportation plan. All rezoning cases include an analysis by build staff, including our city engineer, of the city's ability to provide both municipal water and sewer services and the potential impact on the city's transportation system. In this particular case, the city can provide adequate water and sewer services, and that would include all uses within the heavy industrial M2 zoning district. The city's current transportation system can handle the traffic generated by all of these uses in the M2 district. The reference parcel lies approximately 1,200 feet east of a signalized intersection of East Sawyer Road and State Highway MM. Both the city and the state of Missouri are working on expansion of this corridor between I-44 and US Highway 60, totaling about $50 million. In the general vicinity, the city has experienced tremendous growth in private investment dollars from existing businesses which have expanded, new retail space, and also large warehousing projects. This parcel is directly adjacent to general commercial C2 to the south, which is in the red, the Burlington Northern Railway, which is directly to the east, light industrial M1, which is the blue to the north, and then also agricultural, which is green, and then medium-density single-family residential, which is yellow, directly to the west. Adjacent uses include a remediation contracted warehouse to the south, railway to the east, Spire Gas Industrial Yard to the north, and then also agricultural and single-family properties to the west. Over the course of the last five years, multiple properties in the area have rezoned and/or developed, including expansions to the Spire Gas Facility, Trifecta Restoration, Far Better Plumbing, the Iron Grain District, Eagle Stop, Hankins Industrial, and also the Amazon facility. A traffic study was required for similar with the rezoning applications, as is typical with all rezoning applications. It was reviewed by the city's engineers for compliance with the requirements of both the city's transportation plan and also the zoning code. The TIS indicates the city's transportation system can support the uses within the M2 zoning district. The TIS does indicate widening of the intersection of York and Sawyer, and also widening of York Avenue if driveways are presented for development off of York. All other elements of the code will be reviewed during development and building code review for compliance with the city's adopted codes, including stormwater, fire, building, circulation, and lighting. During the public hearing testimony of planning and zoning a couple of weeks ago, a testimony was heard, including the following points: noise concern, traffic, concerns regarding an existing power pole which has been hit by multiple trucks traveling on York, the general condition of York Avenue, neighbors also believe this is a residential area, and also pollution. The P&amp;Z Commission did unanimously recommend denial of the rezoning request. This recommendation by planning and zoning is not binding to city council. Build staff does consider the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan, consistent with the trend of development in the area, compatible with existing land uses, and able to be served by municipal facilities, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council?
Is the pole that keeps getting hit, would that be solved by the widening of York and those intersections you've mentioned?
Honestly, probably not. That particular pole is within a CU electric easement, and it is located near the S corner, right where it bends to the south. It is literally in a location where trucks can not navigate the corner and the pole.
Yes, sir. This may be a follow-up question after this, but so I assume also annexed in in 2005 with Brookline?
Yeah, 2006 with the Brookline.
And was that always zone ag then? Do we know?
Correct.
Other questions? All right. Seeing none, I will open this up for citizen questioning, or comments, rather. So let's start with the yes in favor of... Please approach the podium, state your name.
Guessing I'm the only one. No, I'm just kidding.
Good guess.
I'm Ricky Haas with Olson. So James Wade is the property owner...sorry, I'm at 550 East St. Louis in Springfield. James Wade is the property owner. The developer is looking to purchase this property from James, and I'm representing the developer. And I'm with Olson, so I would be doing the civil engineering. And so I want to take some time to talk about...so you guys will be voting to approve this to rezone M2 to M2, but what we're really trying to do is warehouse with office. And so we're looking at potentially doing it in two phases, where we'd have about 50,000 square feet initially, and up to 100, maybe more than that, in the full build-out. And so the developer, they have a lot of interest in this right now. It's probably going to be full if we can get this passed and built. There's a lot of interest, so all the interested parties are kind of watching this rezoning case to see how things go. The cost to build this would be about $8 million for phase one investment in the city. Overall, it'll be about $15 million for the project. Karen alluded to the improvements that the developer would be doing. They would be widening York south of Sawyer to our first drive entrance. And so one of the big concerns is truck traffic to our site. We understand that. And so right now, there's Amazon trucks that are going down that road and trying to make that sharp curve at York, possibly other trucks. I'm not...may not be all Amazon. They can't make that curve, and so we're going to widen that road, York, so that trucks can make that intersection at York and Sawyer. They can get south, they can get to our drive entrance, and that'll all be a functional maneuver for trucks. At the end of our improvement, we'll put huge signs that say, "No truck traffic through." I understand that's not going to stop trucks, but what we are doing, we're widening York, we're providing a drive entrance. This entrance isn't gated, so trucks can come into our site and turn around at all hours of the day. And so we are making that condition better, in my opinion. You know, I understand we don't want trucks going through the neighborhood. We don't really want them going through our site, but we're willing to do, leave that open so that they can make that maneuver. Also, to talk about the noise, that's a main rail, train rail there. 60 to 70 train cars go by that a day, so I think that's quite a bit of noise there. We would do lighting to follow city code, do buffering around the property. And the biggest thing that planning and zoning came back, they didn't think it was the correct zoning here, and I disagree with that. We're a quarter mile from Amazon. It's a quarter mile to the west here. We have similar zonings all the way around us, C2, M1. We're 2/3 of a mile to James River Freeway, and so really good highway access. The city has done a lot, spent a lot of money to make this property developable. We've got sewer, water that run by the site. There's lift stations that service this. The water tower is just to the southeast. The signal was talked about. All the MM projects, all of those make this a really developable property. And so with that, just a quick point, I think there's a perception in Republic that the city council, everybody just approves every development that comes, but what we don't see behind the scenes is that all the projects that come, I brought projects that weren't the best, and they never saw the day of light. They got wiped out. And I think that's important to understand. This is the right project for this spot, and just with all the infrastructure that's put in place. And with that, this is going to create a lot of taxes. There's a supply companies with interest, so they're going to generate a lot of taxes, more jobs coming to this area. And so with that, I ask that you guys vote yes to rezone this to M2. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir.
Just one. You say you're going to widen York. How far down York are you going to widen?
It would be to our first drive entrance. We haven't perfectly laid out where that is. Kind of some of our preliminary looks are roughly where the 3020 address is, about halfway down.
So you say you're going to fix the S curve?
No. We would be only improving York from Sawyer halfway down our parcel, where we would have a drive entrance into our site, so trucks could come down that and into our site and be able to turn around and leave back on Sawyer.
I guess I misunderstood you then, because I thought you said you were going to straighten out the S curve.
No, we wouldn't straighten that out, but we feel like we're with our development moving forward, we would give an opportunity for trucks to turn around instead of having to use that S curve. And I think a component of that is just the signage. That's all we can do. We tried to...we talked to the city and looked at potentially closing York, and we can't do that. The city isn't willing to do that. The majority of the reason, I believe, is because Brookline almost only has two access points, so you need to be able to have fire get from either direction, so we can't close York. We would love to close it and have the residents go south and our development go north, but it's just not...it's not going to work that way.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Thanks. Now, in all fairness, those of which speak against this, I will be giving four minutes, and then you can talk as long as you want to and reply for anything. So Chris, would you mind changing to four minutes? All right. Does somebody want to volunteer to go first? You want me to pick? I'll pick. William Clark. Mr. Clark, if you don't mind approaching this podium, state your name and your address, and you will be given four minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is William Clark. I live at 2752 North Atlantic Street in Brookline Village. May I start?
You absolutely may.
Brookline is a historic city. It's been here just as long as Republic. Has a good history on it. It's special. It's historic, it's residential, and it's my village. Having industrial being brought in, and especially in the way of my neighbors, is concerning. With us having several different industrial parks surrounding our area, this does not need to be industrial. This does not need to be heavy. This needs to be residential. We have beautiful houses down Sawyer. It'd be kind of sad to cross the tracks and literally go, be on the wrong side of the tracks, going from nice, beautiful houses that bring in good money to industrial. I can understand the light industry. This is pretty significant. I vote against this, or I'm against this. And please take that in consideration. And I want to see Brookline grow, but I don't want to see it turn into a concrete slab, and I do not want to see it removed from this plane of earth. There's a lot of talk about Brookline being paved over. We bought our house about six years ago for the scenery, for the size, and our house is over 100 years old, so there's a lot of history. And we've done some research. I think I'll be here more and more as these pressures push in, and I will often cheer for my neighbors and for my neighborhood and for Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Clark? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm going to go down the row here. I now have Melanie Clark. Same routine.
My name is Melanie Clark. I live at 2752 North Atlantic Street. That was my husband that just spoke.
Absolutely.
So I actually spoke at city council October 20th, 2020, because I was concerned about hearing that a warehouse was going to be built in our neighborhood, and that was Trifecta. That is where you see the red C2 right in our neighborhood. There's nothing wrong with their business, but they make terrible neighbors because of traffic and light pollution. And when they were being built, the neighbors directly around them had their yards torn up by heavy equipment, and one lady even had a dump truck parked right in front of her garage door, and she could not get out for three days, and that was without her permission. So it really is not pleasant having that kind of construction in the middle of a neighborhood. Our concerns are this is a residential area. We know all of our neighbors. Our neighbors are all very friendly. We are the kind of neighborhood you would wish you lived in, where the kind of citizens that Republic should encourage having that kind of a neighborhood. And it's discouraging to hear that tax money is more important than good citizens and safe neighborhoods. So I hope you would consider that. I would also like to show a picture of one of the trucks. More than one has tried to take that S curve, and we have lost electricity. We've had neighbors have their property damaged, and this is what it looks like when a semi tries to take that curve. It cannot...
I'm getting old. Could you bring it closer? I'm sorry. I don't have the right glasses on.
So here we go on the S curve, and you see, if you can tell from the front of the truck, it can't even maneuver. It had to drive through neighbor's yards and took out a fence.
Okay.
So if anybody else wants to look at that.
Thank you.
Do you want to see?
I can see it.
He's not as old as me, apparently.
I'm good. Thank you.
Like I said, that's happened more than once, and at one point in time, we even lost power for, I believe it was like 13 hours in the whole area. We are concerned about the noise pollution and light pollution. We're even concerned about water quality. I know he's saying it's going to be a warehouse, but there are people in the area that are still on well water, and we are concerned what is going into our groundwater at this point. We're also worried about our property values. We did not move here to live in the middle of an industrial park. We had no idea when we first moved to Brookline that that was any intentions, and like I said, it's always been a very safe, quiet neighborhood where the kids can walk and ride their bikes, and we didn't have to worry. And now we don't know who's working at the warehouses and if it's safe. We've even had incidents where workers from Amazon came over to our dead-end street and were doing trucks. And that's not what we want in our neighborhood, but thankfully, our Republic Police Department is awesome, and they've always come out and checked out every concern we had. The last thing that I would like to point out is that we now have several Ukrainian neighbors, and they have come to this country because they were displaced due to war. And they love our neighborhood, and they are just as hardworking and good neighbors as anybody else. And now they have the fear that they are going to lose their homes here in America due to this development, and they cannot speak for themselves because their English isn't that great. So at any time, if you would like to hear from them, I would be glad to bring them and get some money to translate for them, but that is also a big concern because it does not seem fair, you know, that they came here for the hope of freedom and peace, and that's going to be taken from them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to David Simmons. It's good to see you again, sir.
Good to see you. My name's David Simmons. I go by Shaky. I live at 2979 North York. You see the two yellow boxes to the left of the development. The southern yellow box is an empty lot. The northern yellow box is my house. We've talked to the developer. I've got nothing against James Wade. He's been the best neighbor I've had in 50-some-odd years. I got no problem with James. I got a problem with the M2. The engineering company states that the driveway, they're going to improve York Avenue to the south of that driveway. The famous power pole, 13 hours, $1,300 worth of meat out of my deep freeze. When I spoke to the officer, I said, "Site him." We're not going to cite him. He's from out of state. CU's lawyer sent them a bill. The trucking company paid like a slot machine to CU for all the damages that were done. My $1,300 worth of meat, plus the tipping fee at the landfill to get rid of it, just come out of my pocket. The power pole has been a problem. We own the place free and clear. How many of y'all want to start over again at 57? I don't want another mortgage. My place is paid for, and I intend to stay there until I'm gone.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to start over again. My concern is the power pole, is the corner. You're going to build a fifth and sixth grade in middle school less than a mile from that development. Now, York's going to be improved.
Not me.
No, no. Public schools is. York's going to be improved from their driveway back north, from their driveway back south. That's on the city. So if it's on the city, why are we still dealing with the power pole? That's...you know, that's for maybe another time.
I didn't know about the power pole until about six minutes ago.
The power pole is famous.
All right. My bad.
Everybody from the city, everybody from the department, the police departments that have to look at it. He mentioned signs. The truck driver ran over the "no-through-truck" signs on the night of the power pole incident. He not only knocked out all the power for us, but he hooked one of the transmission lines, 144,000-volt big transmission lines. So that was the 13 hours to put the system back together to get us going again. That's the last big piece of property left between there and MM. MM, everything on the west side of MM is all now commercial or M2 or industrial. The businesses on the north side of Sawyer, Tim Farr has been there forever. The last new building built there was y'all's fire station. Tim was there before. He's added on. Tim came by and talked to the neighbors, said, "Hey, guys, y'all are going to hate me." Why are we going to hate you? You've been a fantastic neighbor. I'm going to add on to the building. Great business is growing. Glad to see it, Tim. You can only go so far. Your lot's only so big. The M2 designation of that is 17 and 1/2 acres. How are we going to expand? How are we going to turn this into any more of an industrial complex with that 17-acre We have more farm tractors travel York Avenue than we ever did cars until Amazon was built and until the convenience store. Everybody's touting iron grain. Striking's done in the parking lot. Do we have a leasee yet?
I'm also not in charge of that.
We don't have a leasee yet. It's an absolutely gorgeous development. It's beautifully laid out. It'll bring a lot of money into the city. When it's leased, it's not leased. Every piece of property at the intersection of MM and 360 or James River, whatever you call it, has changed hands in the last three years. call it, has changed hands in the last three years. Every bit of it's changed hands, but nobody's developed it.
Thank you, Shaky.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time tonight. I'm going to get the name wrong. Can I just call you ma'am?
Just call me Mama Y.
Mama Y. I save the best for last, if that's okay.
Well, of course, always the best for last. My name is Wyattta Simmons.
Yes, ma'am.
I live at 2979 North York Avenue. I have been there for 10 plus years. Love the neighbors, love the country, the train. I don't hear it anymore. Semi truck horns, you bet I'm going to hear those. I'm going to hear them a lot. And the headlights, my bedroom window faces the street. Do I want a semi high beams pulling out like he said, all hours of the day and night? Who would want that? My husband mentioned he's 57 years old. He doesn't want to start over. Be in my shoes, I'm 65 and retired. I've been there. I love it there. I love my neighbors. I love James to death. I worked with him. I don't want to see warehouses from my front yard. Taxes just been raised for my property. Okay, my property went up in value. Great. Now it's fixing to drop. So now what do I do? You know, before I could, what is it you said my property was worth 187,000? Okay, I'm paying property taxes on that. This warehouse goes in, I'll be lucky if I can get 50,000. So do I want a warehouse to go in there? No, I don't. And I don't want to see my neighbors go because I know they're not going to stand for a warehouse either. We'll end up with a bunch of empty small lots. That's not going to help the city of Brookline. It's not going to help it at all. We've all listened to the trains. To me, it's a lullaby to listen to those trains go by. I don't want to listen to trucks. And from what I'm understanding, guess what? Their driveway is going to come out right about my property line. I don't want to see it. I think Brookline is a small town that Republic has swallowed up, and I don't mind that because I love Republic. I don't like Springfield. I don't like the big city. I like the country feel. And slowly but surely, we're losing that country feel, and I don't want to lose Brookline. Brookline's been home, and I like to see it stay home.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, if they want to buy out everybody in Brookline, I bet everybody'd be happy then. But instead, they're just going to drop our property values, and it's just not worth it. Republic just put a beautiful park out there. For what? For what, the industrial? I mean, come on. You've got a beautiful park. We're enjoying it. City of Brookline goes out there a lot, talks to people. We enjoy it. My granddaughters love it out there. They always ask me, Grandma, take us to the park. That park's going to end up just a waste of Republic's money, and I hate to see that. It's beautiful. I can see deer out there. I love it. I don't want to miss all that again.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And ladies. Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to make a statement about this issue? All right. So this is a first read. That means there's not going to be a vote on it tonight. That means that we're going to do our work and come back and vote on it next time likely. You are, people many times ask, what happens now as far as do you have to stay? You should stay. We're going to hear the audit report here in a little bit. So I, and if you want, you could come sit by me, and we can flip through the book together. So if you'd like to stay for the, I'm sorry, John. I'm very excited to hear your present statement. So you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave. That's my point. So moving on to item number six on our agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-20 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clark.
In ordinance of the city council approving the final plat of the Stone Creek Falls Phase One subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. The builds department's requesting approval of the final plat for Stone Creek Phase One, which is outlined on in green on your screen. The final plat of Stone Creek Falls Phase One legally divides approximately 64.37 acres of land into 11 lots. This is five residential lots and six multifamily lots. It also includes the dedication of right-of-way utility and stormwater easements. The final plat includes 3,572 linear feet of city street and also includes 7,144 linear feet of sidewalk. The final plat does conform to the development plan for the Stone Creek Falls Development District, or PDD, which was approved back in August of 2021. The builds department has reviewed and recommending approval of the final plat as it does conform to the requirements of the approved development in the city's final plotting code.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council? Seeing none. Any citizen comment on this issue? Again, seeing none. Remember, this is a first read, so please get with staff before the next meeting if you have any questions. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda, this is a resolution, 23-R-36, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Alis Acre Arnie Insurance and Business Advisors for provision of insurance, brokerage, and consulting services. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 23-R-36.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Good evening.
Good evening. Lisa Addington, Chief of Staff. Our current health insurance broker agreement is due to expire this year. Taking into consideration the importance of health insurance and that it is a top concern of our employees due to the rising costs associated, we have an obligation to ensure due diligence is followed when selecting the next health insurance broker. An RFQ was advertised, and we received six responses. Additionally, we assembled a committee consisting of Bob Ford, Finance Director, Garrett Brickner, and Karen Haynes, Builds Administration, Melissa Wallen, and myself from HR. After reviewing the responses and meeting with each vendor, we overwhelmingly and unanimously agreed that Alis Acres Arnie was the top vendor and the best fit moving forward for our benefit needs. We also conducted references that confirm this decision. The pricing will be a per employee per month based upon the number of employees at open enrollment, which will occur November of 2023. This amount is estimated to be 53,000 per year for three years, so that rate is locked in for the term of the agreement. We also will have consistent access to benefit software that will save an enormous amount of time for staff. We currently have this software, but it is tied to a carrier. So if we are to go with a different carrier due to pricing, we would lose that software. And to purchase it outright is a little over $10,000 per year. So we are taking this agreement early because we want the new broker to get acclimated to not only staff and the data, but we also want them to assist with the open enrollment process for 2023, which will be for 2024 benefits. But the new rate of pay will not occur until January of 2024. So we will be sure to include that amount in the 2024 budget process. Staff is recommending approval of this agreement with Alis Acres Arnie. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate Kevin Robbins from Alis Acres Arnie here if you should have any specific questions for him.
Questions from council? Mr. Frank.
Mr. Mayor, have we had experience with Alis Acres and Arney?
Arney.
Arney. Sorry.
That's all right.
Have we had experience with them before in the past?
We have had meetings with them, but like in this capacity, not to my knowledge.
So a three-year commitment that's kind of typical for this sort of agreement?
It is. Especially to lock in a rate.
To get that rate?
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of 23-R-36, please vote. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries six to zero. Moving on to 23-R-37, a resolution of the city council approving the independent audit report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 23-R-37.
Motion, second.
A motion and a second. The floor is yours, sir. Favorite part of the year, right here.
Everybody's favorite meeting of the year. Good to see a good turnout tonight. Very happy. Obviously, my fame precedes me. My name is John Cummings. I'm with KPM CPAs in Springfield, and we're going to be going over the audit for the year ended December 31st, 2022. You should have a bound booklet and a couple of letters, and I will keep this brief in order to keep your meeting on track. Now, I love this stuff. It's what I do. And a lot of effort in this, so.
You talk as long as you want. We're here all night.
I think about an hour and 30 minutes ought to about do it.
Perfect. Can you stretch it to two?
Don't tip me. So I will try and keep it way briefer than two hours. How's that?
Fair.
We're going to start on page four of the bound booklet. That's where all the real important information is because that's what everybody cares about, which is the opinion on your financial statements, because the whole point of the audit is to give an opinion as to whether or not these statements are materially correct. If you have statements that are not materially correct, they're not very useful. And your bondholders don't like it, the citizens don't get good information, all kinds of problems arise. So you'll see that the first paragraph here covers the opinions, and in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, and each major fund of the city of Republic as of December 31st, 2022, and the respective changes in financial position. And where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So what does all that mean? That means you did good. That is an unmodified or a clean opinion. It's the best possible result and helps out in bond ratings and that kind of thing. So good work on all of that. You did have a change in accounting principle for the year in the Gatsby 87 on leases was implemented. You might want to know the basis of the opinion. We did conduct our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. What that really means is there's a lot of documentation, a lot of checklists, and a lot of scanning of documentation that goes into this. There are two different kinds of audits that we could do in carrying this out. One would be a test of controls audit. One would be called a substantive audit. And so in the course of evaluating the city, what we do is we go in and we check the internal controls, and we get a feel for what's all going on during the year. And then we make a judgment call as to whether or not we want to test your controls to get to a good feeling about your financial information, or if we want to just drill down into the substance of transactions. And with personnel turnover and things going on, it's often way more efficient to just do a substantive audit and just drill down into the meat and potatoes of these numbers. And so unfortunately, for those who take care of keeping up with remittances on revenues, bank statements, bank reconciliations, utility billing, invoice filing, that's a tougher call for them because they then have to do a lot of work to pull a lot of information together for us. So I want to take that little moment to say thank you to all of the people that we placed a lot of stress on while we were on site. We were on site for a week, and I'm pretty sure that we weren't the only thing on people's agenda that week. So everybody stayed very kind, very hopeful, very responsive. And so we do appreciate all of the help of everybody over at City Hall in the business area that were helping us with all of the things that we requested and for the very good attitudes that everyone kept. So it would be a huge mistake to pass on mentioning that. So with that, we'll turn over to page 23, and we're going to go through a lot of numbers here, but I'm going to go kind of fast. So this is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for your governmental funds. The governmental funds of the city include the general fund, the street fund, the stormwater improvement fund, the fire sales tax fund, the parks and recreation fund, the capital improvement sales tax fund, the major grant fund, which is also known as the ARC fund, or the American Rescue Plan Fund, and then the capital project fund and a debt service fund. And then you see the total. And what people mostly care about is what happened in the general fund, because those are the funds that are generally accessible to the city for purposes that are just general. They're not restricted purposes. They can be, the funds that are in there can be used for about anything for the most part. So total revenues there in the general fund were 11,673,348. That's up about $4.3 million, and about 3.9 million of that was sales tax increases and mostly because of the public safety tax. That was a big chunk of that. Licenses permits with all of the building and things going on, I don't, I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. 535,266, that's up about 73,000 over last year. Overall, revenues look very good in the city at the moment. On the expenditure side, which does matter, total expenditures in the general fund were That's down about 643,000 over last year. So some budgetary restraint there on the part of the city as well. So that's good. Helps build balances for days that are not quite as sunny as these current ones are. And we all know that eventually there will be days that are not quite as sunny. If you skip over to the total for all governmental funds together, including the general fund, you'll see that total revenues were 24,275,735, which is up about $8 million over last year. Then on the expenditure side, you had 24,675,411, which is up about 3.9 million. So in the general fund, you had an excess of revenues over expenditures of 2.7 million. And across all your governmental funds, you had a decrease for the year of right at 400,000. So most of that has to do with large capital projects that the city has ongoing, that are going to be ongoing for a while. And, you know, they'll be really one-time type expenditures, and so it's not ongoing operational budget type things. So it's to be expected, like when you look at the street fund, it's down $5 million because of large project. So not not all that surprising on the information front. So on the next page is kind of the rest of this statement, and you can see here that you had various other financing sources and uses, particularly in the street fund, there was developer-donated infrastructure of 3,297,450. Also proceeds from new debt issuances of 2,519,25. And then transfers in and out for operations in various funds. And so after all of those things, the general fund in particular netted an increase of 3, 546,921, and ended the year with fund balance of 9,636,920. Across all your governmental funds, you had an increase for the year of 5,767,990, and ended the year with fund balance of 18,259,257. Now, you might know what fund balance is, but for those who may not know, fund balance is not necessarily cash. So if anybody was thinking that, I hate to burst the bubble. Fund balance is actually the sum of all of your assets minus your liabilities. So it'd be cash, accounts receivable, inventories, prepaid items, minus accounts payable, accrued expenses, that sort of thing. So not exactly a cash balance, but an equity balance. An important point to bring out on this is in your major grant fund, the city did end up using up all of the ARC funds during 2022. That allowed the city to basically get it off the books with the federal government. We were able to access the $10 million allowance for lost revenue, and so that opens the usage to general government services, made it a lot cleaner and more streamlined for the city. And received a clean opinion on that particular thing as well, but it's an examination report rather than a audit. So if you want to turn over to page 28, we're on the homestretch numbers on 28. Does that make everybody happy? So page 28 is basically the same statement, except for it is reflecting water fund and sewer fund or enterprise funds activity for the year. And so it's a little bit different type of accounting than you see in the governmental funds. When you move to an enterprise fund, that's considered a business type activity. And so because it's a business type activity, it's closer to full accrual, and so it has long-term capital assets and depreciation that are included as part of the assets, where in the governmental funds, that doesn't happen. And then on the liability side, it actually does include the long-term debt as a liability, where in the governmental funds, it does not. In order to see all of that for governmental funds, you have to look at the statement of net position, which is earlier in the report. And if you have questions, I'm happy to do a tutorial later, but I'm not sure everybody wants it tonight. So and also don't get too attached to it because in about three years, there's going to be a whole new accounting model, so no big deal.
I want to ask why, but tell me later.
I can give you a short answer if nobody in the room works for GASB.
Short answer.
GASB likes to change things for the sake of change. So they hadn't changed it since GASB-34, which was about 20, well, they approved it about 25 years ago. It implemented about 22 years ago. And they feel like that's long enough to have a particular reporting model. And so why not change it?
Fair enough.
So anyway, that's coming up. It'll be lots of fun. On the water fund, total operating revenues were $2,537,011. That's down about $12,000 for the year. Operating expenses were $2,182,363, which is up about $47,000. You had an operating income of $354,648. You had net non-operating revenue of $203,513. Donated infrastructure of $1,329,892. Transfers in of $182,950. Transfers out of $297,643, which left a net change in position of $1,773,360 to the good and an ending net position for the water fund of $7,090,542. So a good year in the water fund. Whenever you have operating income, that's a good sign that things are working the way they should. On the sewer fund, operating revenues were $4,406,607, which is up about $843,000 over last year. The total operating expenses were up $1.6 million at $4,171,524. You had an operating income of $235,083. And you had a net non-operating expense of $580,646. Developers donated infrastructure of $1,286,565. And after transfers, you had a net increase in net position of $704,504 and had a net, net position at the end of the year of $21,661,954. So good financial year there. Overall, the utilities increased their net position by right at $2.5 million. So things are on track. So any questions on financials? Okay, seeing none. We'll flip over to page 75, and I think that should be the last page in the bound booklet. This is a part of the government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General. If there is a weakness in internal controls, we have to talk about that and just kind of disclose it. This is considered a significant deficiency. It's kind of a mid-layer level of deficiency. Really have a material weakness, which is the highest level. Then a significant deficiency is down a level from that. And then just a control deficiency would be kind of the baseline level, and then it goes away. But basically, because of various turnover within the city, there was times where duties weren't segregated as much as they probably needed to be. And that's not an uncommon position. Usually, a municipality has a really hard time getting rid of this at all anyway. And the city's made some really good strides in the internal control area in getting things separated out and getting people in positions and trained and all of the things that have been going on over the last few years. But it is one of those things where it was kind of razor's edge. And that turnover that happened probably kind of pushed it back to still being in the report. If things stay on track for the full fiscal year, I would anticipate this probably goes away most likely in the next year, maybe two at the worst.
We've hit this almost every single year that I can remember. Has there been a year that we've avoided this deficiency?
Well, you came so close a couple of times. And then there was a little bit of turnover, and then we're kind of back, you know, it's like step forward, two steps back, two steps forward, one step back. Kind of, kind of comes and goes a little bit. But it's, it's right on the razor's edge of being there. So hopefully, we can have some continuity and keep things rolling. So and then nothing can go away. I would love to say it would be a commend, but really, on the Yellow Book findings, we don't really commend on those, unfortunately. But I could put in a commendation for you if you'd like. But anyway, so that's it for the bound booklet. You do have two letters. I'll go really briefly through the one that starts with periodic internal control review. The other one is a letter to those charged with governance and basically is our last chance to tattle on everybody about, you know, being uncooperative or having disputes and disagreements, all kinds of things. Spoil your read. It's going to be a calm one because there's nothing to report in there. So nothing to tattle about, unfortunately. Would make it a little more fun to write and probably a little more fun to read. Maybe a little more stressful on both sides. So I'm glad everybody behaved themselves. So periodic internal control review. This has been here for several years, and that is because the city is changing very rapidly. And that's not a bad thing. It's an amazing thing to watch. The city is handling it very well and has a lot of very good people in place, and it is looking very promising for the future of Republic. And part of what goes along with that growth is new challenges. And so as those new challenges arise, those new situations arise, it's important to keep in mind the internal controls in the city and just kind of always keep it in mind as you're looking at policy changes and personnel changes, new positions, taking away positions, reassigning positions to make sure that it doesn't disrupt what is a pretty strong set of internal controls. As long as you're keeping that in mind, odds are you're not going to accidentally mess something up. So that's why we have it front and center. There are some new pronouncements that are coming up. The GASB, as I said, likes to change things for the sake of change. So we talked about GASB-87, which is in this audit. It basically brings the leases on to the financial statements under a particular redefining and concept statement that they did relating to leases. You'll see the GASB Statement 96, Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements, or SABITAS, is the next thing up for 2023. And basically, it takes the same concepts from the leases in GASB-87 and applies them to software arrangements. So you might think you don't really have very many of those. Unfortunately, you probably do because PD, fire, utilities, accounting software, they're sneaky. There's a lot of those types of agreements out there where you're basically just renting software use. And it falls under this particular standard. But fortunately, we have some good software. We basically key in the terms of the agreement and it spits out what needs to go in the footnote, what needs to get reported in the financial statements. So it's a fairly easy one to implement as long as we have the agreements. So there will be a process of rounding up all the agreements for the next round. So on the next statement that is going to be applicable, GASB Statement 100, Accounting Changes and Error Corrections. And that is applicable for the 2024 fiscal year. At GASB 100, they wanted to memorialize it with an important standard like how we would deal with accounting changes and maybe error corrections. Not sure why that wasn't like Statement 3 at, at the latest. Because there are going to be errors that need to be corrected, and there are going to be accounting changes when there's a hundred GASB standards. So anyway, it does define all of that, and it really doesn't impact the city all that much, but does affect auditors a lot. So GASB Statement 101 on compensated absences. Basically, this is for 2024. And what it does is it says that you do not have to include military leave, bereavement leave, duty-duty leave, things of that nature in your compensated absences formula in order to be materially correct. So just kind of clarifies. There was a budgetary compliance matter that we brought up just as a matter of just kind of be cognizant of it. Basically, there was an issue in the major grants fund where there was a negative balance originally budgeted. It's not a big deal. There are no budget police. There's nothing like that. And it has to do, I think the, the source of the issue was the timing of the revenue recognition in the budget because you basically look at it on a cash basis and budget it that way. And then we come in and we shift the timing of recognition of revenue or expenses. And that throws things out of whack. And that's really what happened on this. But it's just something to kind of be aware of. And I think maybe last year even, the city went back and did an amendment after year end. And we just didn't this year because it's really not that big of a deal. Doesn't really change anything. The city's not in a bad position financially. Doesn't affect anything with the state or statutes or bond ratings or anything like that necessarily. So just something to be aware of. Last and not least is everybody's favorite relating to cybersecurity and information technology controls in that. Everybody loves this stuff, right? I actually looked it up. I'm, I'm an accountant. I'm not a tech guy. So everybody probably has figured that out already. But there are a lot of cities in Missouri and schools in Missouri at the moment, actually, that are getting hit with cyber attacks. And so the rise of this is a real thing. And so I know the city takes a lot of steps to be secure, but.
Would you like to be on Chris's email list?
My real fear, my very real fear, because of my concern for my clients, is that just a momentary lapse can create a major problem that is very stressful and difficult to deal with and can even feasibly be very expensive to deal with. And so just that kind of casual reminder of, hey, don't let up on this because the criminal element is way out in front of the law-abiding element. The other thing that has happened, and this isn't necessarily in here, but it's just an aside, that fraud in general is on the rise in that they've brought back things like check washing. And that's old school. But I had a city that sent a check out of like $225. When it went out, came back $60,000. So this stuff is real. It does happen. And so it is stuff to be watching for now. You do positive pay and things like that, which will catch things like check washing. But there's reasons why you do things like positive pay. So all of that stuff is important. You need to be thinking about it. So with that, I will say thank you very much for your time this evening and your patience. Hopefully, I didn't try it too much.
Any questions for John? John, as always, you've done a wonderful job. I know that coming and working in our cramped little offices may not be the most fun thing in the world, but we appreciate you and your team, and thank you for putting this together.
All right. Well, thank you very much. If you have any questions, feel free to get in contact with me, and I'll help out however I can.
Thank you, sir. So after the presentation, I do believe we still need to approve the independent audit report. So as this is a resolution, I can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of 23-R-37, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries six to zero. Moving on to our final resolution. This is 23-R-38, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Midwest Public Risk for Property and Liability Insurance for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Any motion and a second to take up resolution 23-R-38?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good evening.
Good evening. Bob Ford, Finance Director. It's that time of year to renew our property and liability insurance. Midwest Public Risk is the current underwriter of the, of that program for us. It's brokered through Hickenbotham Insurance. NPR is a bit unusual in the sense that it is not a true insurance company by a traditional definition, but rather a state-authorized insurance pool. And by definition and statute, a formal bid is not required. So we are just, we're asking for a renewal of this property and liability insurance for the next, for this next year, beginning July 1, recognizing that, that there's a reasonably significant increase in the premium cost year over year of about $58,000. So what's driving this? So primarily, this is being driven on the properties, property side, where the new Bills building is now coming online and being insured. That's covering about half of the increase on the building side. The other half is NPR for the last couple of years, probably the last three years, has not done an update or upgrade to the valuation of the existing properties that the city owns. They took a blanket 10% increase across the board on the valuation of all the properties owned by the city. So that increase of 10% across the board represents the other half of that increase in the property cost. We saw a similar action taken on the liability side where they took a 10% increase across the board on the premium cost for the employee liability cost. So once again, this goes back to a fundamental increase by NPR of 10% kind of across the board. NPR has agreed to come in at their own expense this year and do an evaluation of all the existing properties that the city owns. Basically, do an appraisal of all of the, of all the properties the city owns and adjust our insurance accordingly for next year. But let's just say they come in and they find out, hey, we increased the City Hall building by 10%, but it's not worth 10% more. We'll pay for that this year. We won't see a change in the premium until next year. However, they're our, they're our underwriter, and we're recommending that we move forward and approve this for July 1 through June of next year.
Questions from council? Mr. Self?
Can you repeat that last part about changing it? And then we won't see it till the end of next year?
We won't, we won't see, we won't see a change in this fiscal year because, or in this, this timeframe because the appraisal is not going to happen until sometime during this term period between July 1 and June of next year. However, if we were to tear down a building, we would go back to them and say, that building no longer exists. We want the insurance to be dropped on that. So we can, we can have adjustments during the year, but we won't know what the full appraisal looks like on all of our properties until the end of this next fiscal year, uh, next of this next insurance year.
But they could change the amount and then bill us a difference, correct?
Say that again.
If they come and do their appraisal and change it.
They could choose to change, they could.
Then they could have a midterm change and cost change too as well.
Yeah, they could so long, obviously, if they came back and said, hey, we think City Hall is worth 20% more than.
We have to agree to it.
We'd have to agree to that. So we're, we're recommending that we adopt and agree to the $58,000 increase in property and liability insurance.
Yes.
So it's not an insurance company. It's, you know, a state-authorized insurance pool for municipalities. I assume that's, this is what majority of cities of a decent size use.
Correct.
How long have we used them?
I don't know. Andrew, for the last four years, five years?
Yeah, I believe since I've been here. If I remember, Jared's probably the best person. I think it's, I think at least five to six years. And I'll, I'll say, I think what Bob's saying very nicely is they think that City Hall went up 10%. And we're, I believe that when we get the appraisal done, we're going to find that maybe it went down 10%. I have a hard time saying that that particular building's more valuable today than it, than what they've added to it.
Well, it depends on if they do it as what's called ACV or replacement cost. If it's replacement cost, nothing went down in replacement cost.
That is correct. Other questions from council? Mr. Self?
So we did not deal with an actual agency. We dealt directly with NPR.
Well, we worked through Hickenbotham as our broker. This is kind of a new thing for me coming into city government because I've always worked through a broker. My understanding is a lot of cities, they don't have brokers when they go, they deal with NPR. They just go directly to NPR. So we actually have a relationship with both players, with Hickenbotham and NPR.
And Hickenbotham was out of where? And Hickam-Botham was out of where?
They're here locally. There is the former Canal, or Connell Insurance Company. They were acquired by Hickam-Botham out of Dallas, Texas.
Good. One thing to note, and Jared, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we, specifically when it comes to liability, we went through a process. There's some things that we do that only NPR would cover when it came to events, is that correct? So, so things like, in particular, like Have a Blast, when it comes to liability insurance, we were limited almost only to NPR. So that was a, that was a tough discussion in trying to weigh how we would take care of the liability with an event like that, but they've accommodated.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, I will call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of 23-r-38, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Resolution carries five to zero to one. That concludes our planned agenda, so reports from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, to the residents that came out, we appreciate you all coming and voicing your opinions. Even though it's tough, we do actually value that opinion. So thank you for coming up here and speaking in front of us. I know it's not, not easy to do. A couple of things, John, on the audit, thank you again. KPM was just awesome to deal with, made it easy on our staff. John mentioned we had several of our staff that were busy for several days compiling all of the things. So appreciate the staff's work on that. Specifically in the audit, you know, we talk about staff and turnover and segregation of duties, and we were in a, in a period of where we had turnover in the director in the finance department. So we've got Bob here now, and, you know, you hear us all say we're, we're really thankful. So there's, there was a timeframe where, you know, the example I would use is payroll, it's kind of like turning the nuclear code, where Jared put one key in, I would put one key in, and in reality, that's why we have Bob now. So we're thankful to have added staff, and we've added one more staff member recently in the finance department. So I think we're addressing that concern, and we will continue to address it. The Heinz and Lynn Roundabout, I believe, is going well. From what I can tell, barring major interruption, we're going to make it on time, beat the new, the new school year so far, knock on wood. I probably shouldn't have said that.
Yeah.
But it's looking good. Last thing, Have a Blast. You mentioned volunteers. I know Jared and his crew are still looking for volunteers. June 30, 6:00 p.m. Looking forward to seeing the entire city out to celebrate.
I tried to volunteer last year, they wouldn't let me. I'll come talk to you directly.
Segregation of duties, I'm not sure. But that's all I have.
Excellent. Reports from council? Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, actually, I want to start out with a question. Are we done with all of the road overlays of the, what's kind of an update on that, if I could?
All of them, except East Heinz. I think completed, they're going to wait through East Heinz until they, to time it better with the Alamo Gaming, and hopefully a couple weeks.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. The only thing, other thing I would like to mention is I did get to drive by and see some of the stuff that was complete, so I appreciate all the hard work that went into that. I've had great discussions these last couple of weeks from a wide variety of topics. And so I really appreciate all the staff that's gone above and beyond to get me questions, answers to all of my questions. I've been kind of all over, so I really appreciate all of the efforts that have gone into that. Other than that, looking forward to Have a Blast, and hopefully I get to see everyone out there. So thank you to all of the volunteers and all of the city that has gone above and beyond to provide that for our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Well, it's a late night, so 7:10, did you predict that?
I didn't even, I didn't even try to call it.
Didn't even try to call it? All right. So I appreciate you guys coming in here tonight. I appreciate the citizens coming and listening and being involved. I appreciate the staff working as hard as you do every single day. I know that sometimes it's a thankless job. I want to spend a second to say thank you. I want to really thank you, sir, for not trying to out-bench me at the gym the other day, because it would have been...